Today is June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the time is six o'clock P M. Like to follow the regular village board meeting order. I myself, Capers.
President.
Gil Garn here.
Chris Dubeck.
Don Corin.
Ryan Seacare.
And absence.
Hold on one second.
Brandon Conrady. Brandon Conrady is joining us by Zoom. Good standard. Budget leaders to the flag of the United States of America. And we're a body of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comment? Anybody here for public comment? Approve the agenda. The approval of agenda, right? Yes. Well, the approval of agenda are essential to the.
Do we want to move, do we want to move? The agenda is just laid out, or do we want to move anything up?
There's anything really to move up. How long will the Pacer presentation take?
Trying to have good, no more than.
Let's do the positive recognition first.
Motion to move positive recognition from a place or improve the agenda presented.
Guys are already here after.
Second.
The first and second, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
We're moving the presentation up in front of the other presentation. So positive recognition before the other stuff.
You have Mr. David Brock, Travis Bilil, and Denise and John Gopper stand up. He's like, on the behalf of the village, I'd like to thank you guys for all your work for, you do all your own, but especially for B-Soup days. So we do have a certificate of appreciation coming for you, but we don't have it here tonight. So thank you guys very much.
It was, uh, the B-Soup day went pretty, pretty dark, pretty well.
It was fantastic.
Fireworks, sir.
I don't know how they do it.
So now we're standing.
We're not going to rock this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Uh, Pacer AI presentation, you're free to go.
Thank you, everybody.
No, seriously, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Hey, Johnny.
Well, the twenty-minute ones coming right now. Are they ready for it?
You guys hear me okay? Perfect.
Again.
Very nice to meet you all. Max, I'm an account executive here with Placer. I do promise I won't take more than twenty minutes. I got the timer out here. But, um, I'm gonna go ahead and just share my screen here to make sure we can see everything. See my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So Placer AI, we're a location analytics company, and what we do is we leverage mobile location data to provide market intelligence for any physical locations across the U.S. Now, we do this by harnessing data for millions of mobile devices, and then we anonymously aggregate that data. It's learned about any physical place. Could be retailers, restaurants, shopping centers, parks, or even any road streets or highways. And not only can we tell you how many people visit a place, but we could also tell you where they work and where else they like to spend their time there as well. And in just four short years, we've become the leading data provider for over thirty-five hundred customers, and about eleven hundred of those fall into what we call our civic space down here. Now, we work with loads of customers all across Wisconsin. We work with the Menominee Area Chamber of Commerce, the Chippewa Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, the City of Howard, Wisconsin, Green Bay, just to name a few there. But from our success in those markets, we started seeing retailers jump on board, the Targets, Best Buys, Walmarts, Burlington Coat Factories, Dollar Generals, and now it's thousands more have come aboard. We've expanded into restaurant groups, CPG companies, financial services, and even airports. And down here, you can see we work with everything from city-level organizations. We work with county-level tourism DMOs, economic development, bids, chambers of commerce, main streets, and really everything civic there. And there's a reason for that success. You know, we just started selling commercially about four years ago, and we're the only company in the space who spent three and a half years prior optimizing our algorithms for accuracy. Okay, and we did that by going out and partnering with dozens and dozens of mobile devices, most are mobile apps, most of which that are only partners of Placer. Okay, that panel is built of roughly thirty million mobile devices, and accounts for about eight percent of the U.S. population there. And while our competition is out buying their data from other panels, other brokers, they've been severely impacted in the market and can no longer yield those same levels of accuracy that they once claimed. And typically what we do, once we go through a platform demo, usually pick two or three of these things that'll lead the conversation. Uh, when me and Bob spoke, we chose Parks and Recreation, and we chose Retail Analysis and Recruitment. And for the purposes of today, since I'm only gonna go somewhere between twelve and fifteen minutes, um, this is meant to be interactive. So if you guys do see something that you have a question on, please feel free to interrupt me to add, so I can answer any questions that you guys may have. Cool. Dabbing into the data here. So the location that I chose for today was this Dick's Fresh Market in Somerset here. Okay, but in Places Explorer View, you're able to look up, you know, any location, and you're able to geofence it yourself or send it into our support team to have a geofence there as well. Okay, so any location that you did see or didn't see, you'd be able to take a look at, and we'd be able to pull data for it there, too. So for today, we're looking at data here for the last twelve months. Okay, but our data does go all the way back to January first of two thousand seventeen. And it's as recent as just a few days ago. Okay, so every day that you log into Placer, you'd have a new day's worth of data to play around with in there. As you can see, it goes back to about, yep, fifteenth there. And what we're able to do up here, too, so typically Placer will pull in what's known as a local comparable. Okay, it'll take into account, you know, the types of property, the demographics, just to have something to compare, say, Dick's Fresh Market to. So if you wanted to look, take a look at two locations, three locations within Somerset, you'd be able to compare them here, and you're able to add up to eight competing venues at once. And the first number I did want to call out here is going to be our panel visits. Okay, so over the course of the last twelve months, there's about ninety-three hundred mobile devices that entered that Dick's Fresh Market. Okay, that number is then extrapolated out to account for the rest of the U.S. population, which is going to be this twenty-four thousand number here. Okay, that twenty-four thousand number, about two thousand people per month, those are going to be the unique singular people that have visited Dick's Fresh Market over the past twelve months there. And this number is then accounted for the rest of the visits here. Okay, so this hundred fifty-two thousand number, that's gonna be how many times those visitors visited Dick's Fresh Market there. And given that those two numbers are estimations, you know, we're always backtesting ourselves, getting backtested on our data there as well. Uh, big retailers, sports venues, they all know exactly how many people are coming into their locations with things like door counters. And, um, an example that would be Best Buy, like before Best Buy jumped on with Placer, they gave us addresses to thirty random locations all across the country. And what they did was match up our data with their door counter data. Okay, and time and time again, it comes back anywhere between ninety-six and ninety-eight percent accurate there. So that's something I did want to touch on, given that those two numbers there are estimations. And scrolling down here, we have our visit trends. Okay, so what we're able to see here is on either a daily, weekly, or monthly frequency, we're able to answer the question about what is driving foot traffic to a location over a given period of time. So in this case, you know, for a lot of retailers, a lot of restaurant analysis that I've done in the past, you know, if you're looking to add something like a new happy hour, or you have some type of thirty percent off promotional item, we're able to see, okay, is that actually driving foot traffic on those specific days, or is that something we should, you know, pull back on or reallocate, spend somewhere else? So as you can see, some spikes and dips in visitation here. With obvious ones like Christmas Day, not gonna be a ton of visits there. But Saturday before, everyone doing their last second shopping and things like that for Christmas dinner. And as you can see, New Year's, uh, New Year's Eve there as well. And moving over here, we have our trade area. So what this is gonna show you is a heat map. Okay, we're able to take a look at this by either home or work location. Okay, I'll just keep it at home location just for today's purposes, but what we're taking a look at here is a heat map, and it's gonna show you the general home locations of the people that are visiting your, um, you know, any location of interest you guys want to take a look at here. Okay, so these red areas are gonna account for the top twenty percent of visitation that we're getting into Dick's Fresh Market. And all these blue areas are gonna account for the bottom twenty percent of visitation that we're getting to those areas. And from here, what we're able to do is we're able to open up our GIS tool and see, okay, how far across Somerset, how far across Wisconsin and the rest of the United States are we getting this visitation from, which is what we're able to see here. And as we can see, good amount of visitation towards the Minnesota border there, which is expected. We got some down here in Iowa. And even over here in Nebraska here, too, a little bit in South Dakota. And when we zoom all the way in here, okay, so this isn't, you know, like Max's house or any of your guys' houses or things like that. So what you can see, all these dots are gonna account for fifty visits from different people that live within that census block group. Okay, so that's how we're able to keep the data anonymity. Since we're not interested in scraping any personal identifiable information or anything like that, all these dots represent fifty different visits from someone that lives within that census block group, so somewhere within this area. So we don't exactly know where. And scrolling down here, we have our visitors by origin. So what we're able to see here is the top one hundred zip codes of people that have visited over the last twelve months. And as you can see, no surprise here, Somerset's number one with nearly sixty-three percent, but we're also able to see where we're getting visitation from, from New Richmond. We got Hudson, St. Paul, River Falls. As we scroll down here, we're able to see the exact amount of visitation that we're getting there on the right. And we could also see the exact amount of visitation that we're getting as we hover over these. We're not only able to see, you know, the exact amount of visits we're getting, we're also able to see the year-over-year change. You know, are we leaking locals to nearby cities? Why aren't they staying and shopping at our retailers, eating at our restaurants, which is what we're able to see here as well. And all these green areas you're gonna see are the most positively impacted areas over the last twelve months. And all of the orange areas are going to be the most negatively impacted areas. To start answering those questions about, you know, these people came here last year, what are they going to different stores for? Um, and where are we leaking this visitation to, and realistically, they could be spending their money here? And then moving over here, we have our visitor journey. So what this is gonna show you is a spider chart. Okay, we're still taking a look at Dick's Fresh Market here, but we're able to start to dive into the visitor journey and start to understand some of the brand affinities of these people that visit your locations. And as you can see, no surprise, most people are coming to going home after, but we're able to see where exactly people are coming to before and after visiting any of your specific locations. You know, it doesn't need to be a retailer, a restaurant, that type of thing. It could be a park, it could be, you know, the Somerset Amphitheater, and you're able to see where exactly this visitation is going. You know, are they staying within Somerset, shopping at our retailers, eating at our restaurants, and making sure that they're spending money here? We're not just limited to the top five here. Okay, as we scroll down, we're able to see the top ten prior and post-occasions. As you can see, a good amount of people are still staying within Somerset, which is always good to see. Went to a different Dick's Fresh Market in New Richmond, so you can start to answer the question about why are they going, you know, what's the difference in stores there? What do they have that we don't have? To start answering some of those questions there as well. As you can see, there's about, I don't know how small that is on your guys' screen, but about thirty pages of this data. So we're not just limited to, say, the top ten locations for each, you know, for prior and post, we can see the top three hundred. So we can get extremely granular with the amount of visit that we're able to see from each of these locations. And then lastly, on our visitor journey, we have our favorite places. So what we're able to see here is, okay, based on these people that visited, you know, Dick's Fresh Market, we're able to then, you know, start to dive a little bit deeper into the brand affinities and, um, into the visit trends of some of these people. It's like, okay, what other grocery stores do they like to go to? You know, do they only go to Dick's Fresh Market, or are we leaking locals to nearby cities to start to answer some of those questions about what they have that we don't? So we could even take, it's on fitness right now, if we could take a look at, say, grocery stores, we could look at hotels. And as you can see, most people that visit Dick's Fresh Market here, they're traveling about ten miles to get to the Stillwater Cup Foods. About eight thousand visits per year there. Got an Aldi here in New Richmond. Another Aldi there. So it could start to answer some of those questions. If you were to bring in another, you know, not even a big box retailer, but another, you know, say, fresh market, another, um, small grocery store, to give you an idea of, okay, the people that already go to Dick's Fresh Market and shop at our shops, you know, what else do they like? If we're going to bring in another store, we at least have data to back up in those decisions to make sure that we're bringing in a store that we already know that people already visit here to make it easy for them as well. And then moving over here to our void analysis. So what we're able to see here, we're able to answer the question about what is our ideal co-tenant? Okay, if you guys are looking at doing some type of retail analysis or retail recruitment, answering the question, you know, what if we do bring in a specific, say, a restaurant or a specific retailer, is it gonna cannibalize already established businesses that we already have? You know, some small mom and pop shops, or it could be some chain quick service restaurants. What's gonna be the best fit based on cannibalization of other businesses, based on demographic fit score, and also frequent co-tenants? You know, I see the Dick's Fresh Market as a chain. In other cities, what's nearby that happens to be a home run for other cities? And how can we replicate that to make sure that people are spending the most money here? So as you can see, I already have it loaded in for, we have fast food and quick service restaurants, breakfast coffee and dessert shops, bakeries, and also I believe I clicked on, that might just be those two. I thought I had regular restaurants on here, too. But as you can see, we can do this for furniture stores, drugstores, could be recreation stores, you know, gas stations if you chose to do so, we do this for gyms, hotels. Just to be able to say, you know, if you have data to back up whatever decision you guys end up doing, if you are looking to either fill a vacancy or you have some type of ground-up development, to be able to have the data to back that up of, okay, why would this be an excellent fit for here? So as you can see from top to bottom, it'll show you that relative fit score. So it looks like this Furelli's Pizza is going to be your best bet. Okay, it also takes into account the region. So something that is a normal fit in California might not be a fit in Wisconsin, you know, so it takes that into account and understanding the people that live within there. I'm down in Chicago, and even some, you know, locations that are down here in Chicago, people in Wisconsin might not have a brand affinity for, and vice versa. So as you can see, on this hundred percent relative fit, based on that Dick's Fresh Market, this is going to be your best ideal fit based on those demographics and, um, cannibalization of the other nearby businesses that you have. With that score, the average monthly visits, and also the freaking co-tenants there, too. And like I mentioned before, you could do this for, you know, any real business that you guys are looking at either bringing in or looking at supporting the businesses that you already have and saying, okay, if we are going to bring in something else, this isn't going to screw up what you've established for thirty or forty years. To not ruffle any feathers there. The last thing I did want to touch on data-wise is gonna be Placer Extra here. So we've learned from our thirty-five hundred plus customers that sometimes these reports are needed to make quicker decisions. So we've built out a team responsible for creating what we call these advanced reports. Okay, and what you're able to do is, so it goes on a credit system, but I've never seen, I don't think in the history of Placer, we've ever had somebody run out. The only reason we really have it on that credit system is so, you know, the Targets and Best Buys of the world that have a hundred, a hundred and fifty summer interns don't just sit here and try and download these reports all day. So you'd have unlimited of these Placer Extra reports, and from what I've heard from some smaller teams, some smaller towns, specifically chambers and cities, that, um, they lean on these reports heavily. You're able to request these at any time from us, and we're able to send them back to you. Um, a couple examples would be the classic heat map here. So on the Parks and Recreation side of things, you know, if you guys are looking at, you know, making some type of additions, say you're looking at adding a trail and that type of thing, we're able to see not only how many people visited a location, but we're able to see where they congregated within that location. So we're not just looking at, you know, say, just one big park. It's like, okay, we know that they went to the park, but where did they go at the park, you know, or should we reallocate some of the spend that we think about expanding the park somewhere else, since it's not really being used that much? And that's just an example of, um, one city that I've worked with recently that I've used it on the Parks and Rec side of things, but you could also do this for things like events. You could do it for retail locations to be able to see, okay, if we've added two or three new vendors from a previous, um, you know, it's gonna be like a street festival or an event or something like that. Are these people actually congregating where we need them to, or we, should we look at maybe adding some different vendors or something like that for next year? And this could be for any location, like, um, you know, Somerset Amphitheater, for example, just because I know we have an index. And then the last report I did want to show is going to be the retail leakage. And what we're able to see here, since I could pull up a sample report, and it's gonna be for, um, Eastvale here in California. But this is just another example of a report that you'd be able to request from us. Okay, we'd be able to, you know, as a customer, you would have your entire city indexed, so all of your locations, anything you did want to take a look at at your fingertips. Okay, but we're able to see the leakage analysis of the residents. And it'll show you, just like how we looked at in favorite places, you know, it'll show you by either apparel, dining, electronics, fitness. It'll show you the number of stores that you have nearby, the amount of residents. And then it'll show you that leakage of like, okay, where are these people going to, and why aren't they spending money in Somerset? You know, are they going over the Minnesota border? Are we leaking locals to nearby cities? And we're able to see that leakage by entity, to be able to answer the question of where these people exactly are going. And as you can see here, you know, it got a ton of leakage to Ontario, California, Norco, some of these just bigger malls out on the West Coast there. The last thing I did want to touch on, as customers, you guys would have, uh, customer success support here. So what they're there to do is really, um, you know, they serve as an extension of your team. So they're there to make sure that you're getting the most use out of the data as possible, you know, that they're slicing dice it in any way, shape, or form that you choose. Okay, and what they're there to do is, um, you know, they really serve as strategic advisors to you guys to make sure that you're maximizing your ROI and your investment with us. Um, this is one of the biggest, in my opinion, um, parts of Placer and on the sports side, because there, it's what, it's led to our near ninety-seven percent retention rate. You know, meaning people aren't only happy with the data that they're getting, but they're also happy with the service they're receiving on that side of things, too. Because they're there to train you, onboard you, and keep you up to date on any type of platform updates we do have, especially if it's something that's of interest to you, um, moving forward here. But as you can see, there's all types, all types of knowledge and training. They can meet with you either weekly, bi-weekly, or not at all if you choose not to do so, but, um, you know, most cities choose to use them because it, they just make sure, you know, if you want to send in a report, you want to take a look at a retailer, you want something indexed, they'll be able to take care of all that for you there, too. Cool. Well, that's all I had. I appreciate you guys, um, taking the time. Are there any questions, anything I could help anybody answer at this time?
Is my question probably more for like Bob? So this is your recommendation, and, uh, how, how do you think it'll be useful to the village?
Number one, attracting businesses, but also retaining them, um, so we would know where, um, people in our community are going, so then that's kind of an outreach. Um, proposal to them to say, you know, people are willing to travel ten, fifteen miles for your, your business, whatever it would be. So that, that essentially would be a kind of a marketing tool for us. Um, and then also to retain businesses to say, you know, like Dixon, Nurse, but what do they have at Somerset? Well, they have a deli. But it looks like two percent go over there, so it probably isn't enough books for, um, Dick's to add a deli here, just because there's a whole population of Somerset people going there. But, um, basically that tool and then the impact of, um, what, what are the concerts bringing to town? You know, that question's come up quite a bit. So we can look at, take that data on those dates to see, well, there was a spike in, you know, lo- local economy at that time, and, um, you know, this is essentially trying to grow and, and bring people in here that, um, a lot of residents have asked for. Um, you know, we got the Plurk property, Tid Five, and then some other areas that, um, we really want to hit some businesses in. So I figured this was a way to leverage some of those challenges to, you know, out of outreach.
The, uh, town of Somerset has this already?
No.
Oh. I thought that was, it was, this was a contract that had the town of Somerset in here.
Yeah, that's a title.
Okay. That should have been village, so.
Yep.
Who would all have access to it?
Uh, good question. Max? Excellent.
Yeah, so places a twelve-month annual subscription. Um, Bob and I already discussed, so it'd be an enterprise-wide, so you guys wouldn't be limited on the amount of users or the amount of POIs or anything that you guys, um, would be able to use. So if you did need to spread it out across, you know, economic development, Parks and Rec, that type of thing, um, the seven thousand dollar price point would cover everything. So, you know, every department that you guys have, because we like to sell it enterprise-wide there.
But business is coming to us, asking us, uh, to pull up information to help them on that, and.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, I thought, that's what I would assume by next time.
Would there be any automated reports that would get sent to Bob to post on their, or either Facebook or website? Would you want to put out reports? Is that something that happens?
Yeah, definitely. Um, so all the data that we took a look at in all those tabs, um, are exportable. So if you did need to print them out and say like a Google sheet, a PDF, um, or CSV file, anything like that, you'd be able to do so. It's not just, you know, you look at it on Placer and you're not able to export it anywhere else. We try and make that as easy as possible. So if you did want to print out, you know, any type of automated reports or get those sent to you, we'd be able to do so, we'd be able to do that.
Bob, is that something you do is put that out, tips on the website or something? Yep.
What an awesome tool.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? I want to advise.
What's the thirty-day trial offer? Is that negotiable on this? Because, uh, you know, even if we didn't like it, and we wouldn't even be able to end this thing within thirty days, is there a chance we could get that extended?
What was the question? I'm sorry. You cut out on the second half.
Thirty, you have a trial period of thirty days in this contract that you submitted here, and I was wondering if that could be increased, because I think thirty days is really hard for us to be able to get any kind of, uh, arms around whether or not this is, you know, gonna be for us.
Right, so that thirty-day period, um, isn't negotiable. Um, we used to not even do any type of trial periods. Um, but if there's anything that you guys want to take a look at, say, in like, uh, you know, a demo or anything like that, I'd be happy to throw some, get in the game and show you, you know, some ROI, but, um, yeah, no, it's not negotiable.
Thank you for your time, Max.
Of course, appreciate the time. Bob will be in touch. Thank you for, uh, letting me present. I appreciate it. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
New business discussion possible approval, approval, Pacer AI proposal.
Uh, do the consent agenda first.
I thought you already put that in your motion to approve the, you know, the general.
Negative.
That was the agenda.
That was just the agenda, sir.
I thought here, and the consent agenda, third.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Further discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible approval, Pacer AI proposal. Liked it. I think it's gonna be a great tool for us. Move forward.
Yeah, these are exactly the kind of offerings that, uh, you know, small towns like us can offer for economic development, you know, benefits. It will, but we're as limited in what we can offer because of our size and available funding, but there's something like this is, we apply this data to member business, but very similar, like Bob suggested business retention. You know, this is a very, um, great, you know, beating starter for business retention. You know, so.
So a motion?
I will. So, so approval of the Pacer AI contract as presented with the noted change of village.
First, uh, town, first from RNC Card, second from Chris Marino. Any further discussion?
Question on where that would be coming from, from the budget end of it?
Economic development.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign?
Nate.
I would, um, ask that the economic development director create a, the guideline or policy of who has what access to it, you know, ability to edit, to the ability to view, you know, because there's multiple access points, and it's, you know, that you want granting everyone access to edit things. But businesses may want to have a view only as, as for, you follow again, you know, how you, how you will handle that access going forward.
Discussion the survey results. Oh, that's one you, you nailed that. Did everybody have a chance to look at it, your emails?
You have about three quarters of the way through it.
It's just a discussion, so we don't have to spend a ton of time on it.
Is this gonna be posted on the website then?
In its final draft, yes.
Do we have to approve the final draft, Bob?
Yes. Yep. So then the, the outstanding things would be to set some priorities, um, by, by the particularly public works, and then that would come through the village board. Uh, what we want to concentrate on our park and recreation efforts and money. So, um, that'll be some ongoing work to do yet for that. So, but this is basically just a snapshot synopsis, so the, the, uh, survey review, um, and, and there's, there's, there's a little bit more work that needs to go into, like I said, the prioritizing, prioritization of, um, the needs of, um, that's in the community, so.
So let's just probably go back to parks and public works for, before the final review?
Yep.
And is there going to be? And is there going to be a July meeting? I think it's like, heard both ways. There's an April.
That's on the agenda, that discussion.
I have a question for Bob. With the current, earlier recently uh, re-adopted comprehensive plan, do we still say that? Parks slash recreation areas of the comprehensive plan are spelled out in our village. Uh, recreation plan.
So our comprehensive plan, if you remember, we pulled a corp out of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Uh, we did that, you're gonna say that, that.
Yep.
This section is hereby, yeah, because what we ended up having is had two different plans that were conflicting each other. And due to getting efforts, yeah.
So. The corp and account plan were conflicting, yeah.
I just wanted to verify that that was still.
That is correct.
Still accurate. And there is no huge time left on this, right?
So if there is not a public works parks meeting, maybe meeting next month, it's okay to go to the following month or not.
Yeah, it's not time sensitive, but.
This is, this is something though. It does not have to be on our, on our needs assessment for the impact fees?
No, it does not, because we don't collect for park fees because we get those funds from the developer. So it'd be a, you know, the, the cash per bot that we receive from the developers. We don't ask again um, of the legal permit.
Okay, any further discussion or can move on?
But this is kind of important during budget time, as we said.
Discussion possible approval, model ordinance for utility easements.
I just came through uh, public works, uh, recommended to come in. Uh, we had some. Uh, issues with uh, work that was being done in the utility easement uh, with uh, the in. The fiber optic installations, but a lot of complaints about that. Um, Bob had pulled this uh, um. Permit application uh, from the city of New Richmond. It looks to be impacted, also requires that anybody doing that would have at least a half million dollar uh. Uh, and I think we, in our discussion, we talked about that being raised to one million under, under three other conditions. And then also there's some model language uh, that uh, was. Recommended to be brought forward to the board for consideration of adoption for the ordinance to uh, collaborate the permit request.
In your, for your next public works meeting, we've changed this wording from the Richmond and in uh. Into the village of Somerset and um.
We should, if we make that recommendation here today and adopt this, we can make that change in our motion.
But yeah, I think it must, yeah, it needs to come back in a clean.
In a clean form and then we approve that.
Well, the only thing that would change on it would be saving the Richmond to the village of Somerset. And uh, the.
And the half million, ten million.
But if you're okay with a half million, Bob.
Be different after Paul. A million is pretty common nowadays.
I'd be, I'd be willing to make a uh, a motion to recommend adoption of the ordinance language. Along with uh, this, this um, can be changed. To reflect the village of uh, Somerset application or railway application. With the modification of uh, three, we can change it over to one million.
Oh, sorry, didn't I?
Brandon Pro, second.
So what is the ordinance then?
Looking at right here.
Okay. It just uh, enabled that, that's it.
No, this was just some sample language. It would need to be put in an ordinance form.
Right.
We're first and second. I guess in further discussion, and this is to bring it back or just approve it?
As, prove the ordinance as presented, yeah. I mean, you want Bob's bike to.
It's gonna have to go into.
Into the ordinance for now.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to approve it when it's not in ordinance form, yeah, and.
It's worth the concept, but I, I, that, that it just needs to be in the resolution form for adoption of the ordinance.
Yeah, and I guess my suggestion is, you know, is to read the content of this. And if you're okay with the content, you know, putting in an ordinance form, there's. Again, to Somerset here by the. And some signature, and put in section numbers, so those are in the appropriate placing and code.
Yeah, we talked about that at, at uh, public works, so, and that was, you know, so it would be under the. I believe the uh, public works ordinance, part of the code, or the, the ordinance. So if you wanted to, you know, dress it up to reflect that, we can definitely consider it next month. But I, I think if the board is okay with recommending it based on final adoption.
And Paul, you're okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, you know, oh, put it in final phone.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Both same sign. Discussion possible approval, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two hazard mitigation plan.
This came from the town. It's an annual. Plan that needs to be approved, so the plan is um, behind the ordinance for you to review.
Pardon?
The plan is included behind the ordinance, so you need to review it.
Boilerplate of changing the years. I make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two, the hazard mitigation plan presented. Second. Any further discussion? Are you not on favor?
I am.
Propose same sign. Here is. Discussion possible approval, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three, compliance maintenance annual report.
That's the maintenance resolution. For some CMR ones point three, or is that gotta be changed?
Forty four, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution three of forty four.
Right.
Put the report here.
Yeah, we're approving it. I'll make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three, the compliance maintenance annual report as presented.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
No, one question, uh, just on this maintenance report, anything speaking out here on this from this report that we need to be made aware of? As far as uh, inflight flows or anything like that, Bob?
No, you know, um, it's same, every category was sort of a four. A four point also, uh, you really can't make better than what Jim says, Jim has done as far as operating the plant.
I wanted to do really good with that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Both areas.
No, nothing in there that's, that's uh, dictating to us any other future maintenance or. Items.
Not other than what's already been identified.
Yeah. Then on past times, we've, they've, they've mandated things that we need to look at.
Yeah.
Right.
Discussion possible approvals, July committee meetings. If you're going to run through those dates, of course, please.
Yep. So the public safety already made. Um, a recommendation that was approved in your consent agenda to change their July meeting to July first. If a public safety meeting is needed. Then the regularly scheduled finance and personnel and public works meetings would be Wednesday. July tenth. With the fourth of July holiday, the Thursday prior, that would likely push your agenda to be posted. By that Tuesday or Wednesday. July, July second, yeah. Agendas would likely be posted July second. For a July tenth meeting.
And the public works at five thirty, so.
But then a regular meeting would be the fifteenth, um, sorry, the seventeenth, correct?
Regular meeting.
Sixty.
As it stands, would be the sixteen, but that is also an agenda item coming up next.
With your. Agenda item coming up next, is it any different than usual I sixteenth?
I put it forward for the board to consider because there's a concert scheduled that evening on the sixteenth. So I didn't know if the board wanted to consider moving it to the fifteenth just to avoid. The additional traffic in town, um, or people trying to come here to a meeting. When there's additional traffic in town, the officers would likely be. Down at the site, so if there was anything on the agenda that required them, just for consideration by the board.
Look, this get. Maybe fifty six hundred.
Hey, let me do it with holding our dates. Brandon, are you okay with holding our dates on the, to the tenth? If we, if we need a public words meeting?
Yep, I can hold the tenth, um, that Tuesday, I will be one of those folks at the concert.
Okay.
July, going out the following Tuesday to the twenty third, does that work for everyone?
I am not available that week.
Is there somebody else that I can sit in for you?
Not that I know of.
Monday, the fifteenth.
That's the right, well, that's what's sitting here in the resolutions.
Yeah.
Scheduled for the fifteenth. And is there a question that, that we've been holding it or?
No, uh, and just so that we're keeping the record clear. What was decided on the committee meetings?
We have. Formal motion on that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure.
Everything together, as far as I know, the committees can schedule themselves.
Well, yeah.
We don't need a resolution for all.
Nope.
But for the board meeting, you either have to do with this or a special meeting request, right?
The question is, are we going to need to meet on the fifteenth or? There's a six or the sixteenth, Brandon said he's not available on the sixteenth.
I'm not either.
So it's either fifteenth or fifteenth or nothing, right?
Fifteen for me.
I'm okay with, I mean, I'll be zooming, but.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty four dash oh four, changing the meeting of the July meeting to July fifth link at six P M.
Second. First and second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Kind of skip over if you like, many meetings, but that's another.
There's no formal motion, no was taken on that.
Well, we can.
Are you planning on moving it?
No, the finance. The tent works for both.
And to clarify, for our purposes, agenda for that, for those meetings out on the second. Or with the. A second or the third. No, for the committee meetings. Because typically the agendas would come out on that Thursday.
So they come out on the second and published on the third?
That's why I'm just seeking clarification from you guys.
What you.
If you can, we say five days or seven days.
Yes, my question is because of the holiday and likely there's not going to be staff here for those agendas on that Friday with it being a holiday weekend. So seeking clarification from you guys of when you would like those agendas, the second, third, do you have a preference?
Draft on the second and final post on the third. If there's a need for a meeting.
That works.
I mean, normally we do draft on the Thursday and and post on Friday, so we're just sliding it up. Couple days because of the holiday.
Thank you.
Discussion possible approval, ordinance thirteen dash one, dash two, three, general site standards, plan for action.
So I put this one in there because Tony came and saw me um, at the end of May regarding the unfinished. Yards um, from some of the new construction, um. There's a lapse in the requirement from August first to May first as it stands, but then that thirty days starts of when it needs to be completed. And he had a list of six or seven sites that had not yet had uh, completion, and he said, well, now what? And was kind of seeking some information from me, um, looking at the ordinance. It doesn't seem to spell out a process, um, of. If they go past the thirty days, then what happens? Who is in charge of? Scheduling a landscaper out there, who picks a landscaper, who schedules, who notifies the homeowner that that's happening? Um, so on and so forth, so I wanted to add it to the agenda so that you guys could talk about it. And perhaps create some sort of um, procedure, so that staff here has a clear understanding of what the expectation is.
Uh, Tasia, is there a certain builder that this is affecting or is it multiple builders?
He didn't say either way, but from. The glance that I have seen in. Our end of River Hills, if it's a multiple.
Bob, is this something you're giving to?
I'm sorry.
Is it something you can speak to it on?
No, other than. Giving some direction, I would.
How to do that, because he hasn't spelled out, so, funny he talked to me about it too, um.
It's hard when we haven't had a lot of time or.
So the, so there, so I understand they, they're. He's requested to be providing the owners of the lots with certified notice that uh, this needs to be completed. And he's trying to figure out what the next process would be then?
There is no.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I did talk to uh, Capstone. And the issue they're having is they talked to their landscaper and they can't lay sod down with all this rain. So they're not sure what to do either.
What's your recommendation, Tony?
Well, I'm not a landscaper, so I don't know when they can lay sod and when they can't, but. I know with all this.
What are they giving you, Tony?
As soon as it's dry enough to lay the sod, they'll get it in. I'm pretty positive they will. They've been doing a good job. Capstone, anyway.
Um, so obviously they are not in compliance of the ordinance right now, but it seems like there's some extenuating circumstances. Obviously, this is the wettest spring we've had since like nineteen eighty two, I think Chuck said, um. I think we're going to have to give them some time since sod isn't quite available, but in the meantime, we can definitely think of. How we're going to give this some teeth and say if it's not done by the, the next village board meeting. Then we would then uh, pick a landscaper to go out to whichever neighborhood and Bob would um. Be responsible for that, if Bob's agreeable.
He's shaking, he said yes. Does that work for everyone? So I, I agree that we just set the time, we're setting a timetable for them to complete, but, but we're saying essentially July fifteenth now. We'll give, but then assume this happens, great. If, if it doesn't, they proceed with doing the work. But going forward, I think is what. Asia was getting at is how, where's the language to give us, give, give the staff guidance? On, on this.
Yeah, I think, I think the main thing is maybe we got to reconsider that date, because I know we said May at the beginning, but um. I know you can't really, typically you can't lay sod till a little bit after June or mid-June. So maybe that May thirty first date kind of doesn't make sense from a sod standpoint.
Well, the language does state that any portion of landscaping requirement is not completed. The village may cause such landscaping and screening to be completed and drop on land streaming escrow. For the cost of the completion, so that's already in the ordinance. So if, if, if it's a matter of if he sends out the ten day uh, notice to commence work. And there's extenuating circumstances, I'm sure that they would be providing the latitude of. The extenuating circumstances to him, and as soon as the. The uh, you know, conditions are right to get that done and there's communication between the building inspector and the, and the contractor. the uh you know, conditions are right to get that done and there's communication between the building inspector and the and the contractor, um they would be um you know, agreeable to that. If there's no communication and there's no forthright coming from the contractor, then Tony should be really talking to Cobb saying, we need to get a a hold of a landscaper because uh this isn't getting done and they're not talking to me. And then Bob could reach out and and uh start soliciting for uh a um you know, landscaper to to handle those those areas and that are of concern.
Bobby, believe there's enough in the landscape escrow account to fix everything if needed.
That helps a lot.
Within reason.
Yeah.
Did you catch it? Did you go with that?
I mean, there's probably, we didn't put enough in the escrow for to do like um irrigation and sod. Um we would be doing just like a a seed, I would say, and maybe some of that um green stuff with the hay in it, but yeah, definitely not enough in escrow for installing irrigation inside.
Is everybody good with uh giving a little more time and going to the July fifteenth meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motions that uh we direct um the developer, they have to July fifteenth to come compliance, otherwise the village will um execute on its uh authority to complete the project with the means laid forth in the organs.
Second, first and a second.
We just, I'll then add that maybe all it works looks at this to clarify how these these things can be addressed going forward because of this case, this would come up every once in a while to the village board, and I think this is really a staff decision until it comes to a point where we have to draw it down on the escrow.
Mm-hmm. The good thing is, is it sounds like it's more just because of the weather, not because they don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
Right?
Is that totally fair to brag soon? It's more because of the rain, the 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 weather that we've been having?
Yeah, that is correct.
But there isn't, that isn't spelled out here that the inspector has the authority to extend this thirty days or because of X reason or Y reason or C without coming back to us. That's what I'm getting at, should probably be listed in here, so they have the guidance and let the staff handle these things until it comes to a point where we have to draw on the escrow.
It's it's probably pretty nice to get ahead of it like this, so we at least have another month, but I know probably not the best thing planting in the middle of the front to grow grass in the middle of July without a lot of watering.
Yeah, I I see what you what we said, the motion for for July, but also directing forward to come back to review the this ordinance to handle um staff ability to extend this at the staff level without committing to the village board until it if the escrow needs to be drawn down.
To give the staff latitude to make that decision.
Yeah.
But if we were to, if we would do that, then we'd be a month behind it again.
I I'm saying for this, I'm saying going forward. Changes waiting forward.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, opposing sign? Motion passes. Class B discussion possible approval of class B beer license application, Edgy Eats LLC. And we can run the beer garden permit for Edgy Eats LLC at the same time.
And maybe the agent appointment ties into that also.
And the A agent appointment. Alyssa Kaufman.
I will so move the approval of last B beer license applicant for Edgy Eats LLC, including their beer garden permit for Edgy Eats LLC and agent appointment of Alyssa Kaufman in the documents presented, we reviewed this at public safety and adopted them all three and in mass as well and just recommend it moving forward. So that is my motion to approve.
Just for a second.
By J and K.
Um I guess I just have a question looking at the map. Where it says highlighted areas are for for liquor storage, you mean beer storage?
Yeah.
Beer storage, okay, but that's just a correction on the map. Cross out liquor and put beer.
Correct. Beer wine.
Beer wine.
Yes.
Good. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Brandon, can you say it again? I think you said aye, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, aye. Is that better? Aye. Me, sorry, the service is bad up here.
I, J and K passed uh discussion possible, full village seal and flags on the wall, which are waiting, Andrew is waiting for a call back, so that we don't have, so we're gonna retain it and table that till next meeting. Discussion possible approval, like election of president pro temp.
Brandon Crow make a motion to appoint Ryan T. Carter as pro temp.
Don't we already have a president pro temp?
Yes, we done every every organizational meeting in August or in April.
Well, second. Uh first and a second, any further discussion?
I just have a question. Um want to change?
Present, currently or not presenting any change? Uh with this with this motion.
President Pro Temp, otherwise it would have been, I was uh President Pro Temp before, is a reason.
I would have, you'd have to ask uh friend why.
Oh, I wasn't talking.
I'm sorry, I was, you're looking at me.
No, I was asking.
Yeah, I would like to see Ryan as pro temp, that's my reason.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Donnie's been doing a good job, I'd like to see Donnie continue. Any further discussion? Uh it's due uh roll call vote, Chris uh.
Aye.
Either will. Okay, aye. Caleb?
Aye.
Nick.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Brandon.
Brandon Crow, aye.
Will you abstain from that?
No, we have the right to. Oh, okay, it's not, it's an election, it's not an appointment. But you elect yourself then, okay? Just like I would vote myself on ready the ballot.
Discussion possible approval, board, committee and commission application. Pedro, can you speak to this?
Yep, so I added this um as you'll see later on the agenda, we've had some interest in our committee positions, which is great. Um and we do have several committee positions open um. With that, when we get the interest, it ranges from anything from a sentence of, hi, my name is blank, and I'm interested in this committee to kind of a whole narrative of their experience. Um so I figured that some sort of application where we gather the same information from all the people interested would give you guys the opportunity um to kind of hold the same weight for for every applicant interested, so this is a model uh taken from another municipality um open to suggestions and and or if you don't like it, we can script it.
I like it, just one time change, there's a title, the the last page at the very bottom.
Is that right? Oh, I see it.
We have this available on our website?
Yes, so the plan would be that it'd be on the website for people either print or complete as a fillable PDF.
Tasia, is this something you want people to fill out now and will table committee positions or just for the next go around?
I don't have an opinion either way. For current interest.
I think we're fine with the people that showed interest to not have them go back and fill this out when they've already submitted what we had asked them.
Agreed.
Make a motion to approve the uh uh appointment applications.
For a second?
Second.
Brandon Crow, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Discussion possible approval ordinance amendment title two, government and then this ministry through chapters one through five.
Chairman, I'd like to speak on that.
You have the floor.
As I say, I have some serious concerns with the language that's been presented, I wondered has has a um council had a chance to review this language that's been presented?
I looked through it um in the last couple of days and some of it's okay, some of it's in violation of state statute.
Exactly, and that's what I was looking at is that this language and several items has been in violation of state statutes. Um I think that uh um you know, in in lieu of that, especially appointments of library boards being subject to trustee appointment is in violation of state statutes. Um the uh other changes in in regards to
Well, the other one I'm ready to stop is preventing village presidents and voting.
A right, yeah, president to vote on something.
He can't vote on his own amendment.
Sure he can.
He's a trustee.
He's a trustee.
We didn't allow. You just, you just, so that's, I'm fine with it, but last what we said no, so that's what that's so it reflects this way.
So you can't, it's it's said rated, the Viga municipalities on that, that they were stating.
Yeah, I'm just, I had just.
Said last month and trying to put it into some starter discussion here.
I guess I'm confused, who said that the village president can't vote on their?
When we we asked you, you said about the appointments, about making the motion and so forth, you know, the motion has to be made by someone else.
No, it doesn't.
Uh appointments.
No, it doesn't. Sorry.
I thought that it's we we clarified last month.
No.
Well, I think we might have been talking about two separate things, we were talking about officials.
Mm-hmm.
And changing.
Appointment of officials.
Officials that changing it from the president appointing the board approving to being appointed by the board.
I think fundamentally, that's what we're really getting at with it. And that's more, I would rather.
I guess there's a separate statutory provision that allows that for officials. And then this is you know, appointments for for different boards and things, depending on the board. You know, the village has discretion to allow some of this language in there. As you pointed out, some of the boards statutes pretty specific as to who has to make the recommendation for those appointments. And this really has the same rules for everything.
Also, on on the section two four ten, page twelve and twelve, it stated the change in there about um members of the board committee commissions are required to attend minimum two-thirds. That was changed to non-elected, I don't know why that was uh made because, but I don't know.
You can't remove a board member for attendance, they're elected.
That they, if the board members can be uh removed.
On a board appointed by.
If they if they're incapacitated, it says in under sixty-one point two-three, it says if a trustee is temporarily incapacitated because of a physical or mental disability, the board may appoint a person to discharge the trustee's duties until the disability is removed. It doesn't mean that they can't be removed.
Temporary removal, this does, this does complete removal.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that, but it also says that they can be, they can be uh removed and then brought back if the if the the disability goes into place, so I I was.
I mean, this section is is meant to apply towards the non-board, should should there be a section for the board? Maybe there should be, that spells that out.
And that's why I said, I think further conversation on this might be worthy of uh, you know, some of this stuff, I am not opposed to any of this stuff as long as we're not breaking laws and uh I think and this is just my opinion, that if we're gonna change the rules and and modify the rights and responsibilities under this governing section, it should be done prior to the election of the next president, not midterm of uh of of his duties. And and that's that's just my first, that we're gonna do this and with then the new person coming in knows what his responsibilities are. The language that we have in the con in the in the current appointment gives for the ability for you guys and for us as trustees and others to give our recommendations, which has happened, and I'm looking forward to seeing who the president has to appoint and if we can't get uh recommendations, then we then the then the appointment won't happen. I think that's how it works, right? If we can't get a not a recommendation.
There should be communication between board members and, you know, the input, I think should be available for the village president. You know, board members have you know, it's their valuable asset and they should be able to give that and the village president should hear that and take it into consideration. And you know, if village president doesn't and they appoint someone that the board doesn't like, the board can turn it down. And then the process just, it sort of forces some communication at that point, and hopefully that communication can be had. It's there's not so much negativity, the people can't talk to one another and we can't move forward and get stuff done. Couldn't agree more, but anyway, um that was my comment, some of this stuff can be fine to change, some of it you can't, I would say.
My suggestion would be to table this and uh you know, we can have further discussion on it, but any any changes in the fundamentals of the the responsibilities of the roles of uh, you know, us as trustees and or uh the president, I would move to table that until um it get changed uh prior to the next election.
Well, we could, we could adopt and set it, set it, set forth on a specific date. But you know, whether we do that tonight or tomorrow or next month or this fall.
Right, and that that's what I'm saying is that we do it prior to the next election, that's my motion.
And the motion, is there a second?
Donnie, can you repeat your motion?
My motion was to table this matter, having conversation with any any changes in the fundamental uh layout and responsibilities of appointments and such would not be made until the next election.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Donnie, you want to put a date on it?
So you well, I was looking at the next election is in April, I mean, even if we changed it first of the year, it really doesn't, you know, that's, I'm fine with that.
So it to the January maybe?
Yeah, like in January, that way we know it because but or December, January, December, I'm fine with either one. Because nomination papers will be going out.
If we have a time before the nomination papers, I think that's appropriate to do.
So December.
Yeah, and you can put an effective date.
Yeah, we can work on it up until then, is what I'm saying, I'm just saying effectiveness shouldn't go into place until nomination papers.
All in favor? Uh aye.
Is that with the
Date with the, yeah.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to be completed by November, prior prior to nomination, nomination paper being submitted. We're gonna, we're gonna amend it and change it at any time, it just doesn't go into effect until prior to nomination.
First and a second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Like move it up to nine C, are you gonna play, are you gonna do it? Is that possible?
Yes, sir. And I meant to move you up, I tried to get your attention at the beginning.
Yeah, come, sorry, I didn't hear the name.
I asked on the agenda.
Everyone's branding me.
Okay.
Let's move up uh nine C. Our next item. Discussion possible approval, General Sam's beer garden application.
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Second. Okay, first and a second, and still my discussion would be this uh the recommendation came back from the police department to be able to update the application for next year. And in the meantime, we uh will look at model policy for for uh for other cities that have the same like concert type venues and things like you have, so we can work together on, so we're not openly violating village ordinance, and we can work something out.
It it would be nice if all everybody that's not doing it the right way would be included in that, not just one license out of fifty, I just like to say that.
Yeah, for sure, and that's the that's the plan.
That was wrong, that was bad. That was a bad move.
We think like the six-foot-high fence is a little too excessive, there's some other things we can work on together and make sure we're not violating our own work of ordinances.
The chief represented his summary indicated, you know, there are others that were.
The chief represented his summary indicated, you know, there are others that were, that are not in compliance or or haven't approved not in compliance for multiple years, so yeah, it it does not apply to multiple businesses, not just one. We're not trying to pick on anybody, we just wanna make it right for the ordinances.
Come on, wait, one out of fifteen licenses, I got get back, I mean.
We've got to talk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, save sign. Motion she carries.
Brandon, were you an I or an A?
He was a I.
I'll switch.
I wasn't I.
Zoom.
Yeah.
There's a delay. All right. Can they appoint us? Did we get through every ordinance amendment title two government?
That was tabled.
No, that's going to stay.
Okay. Discussion possible approval committee appointments. City, you know, just on on nine A, with the application that we've talked about. If you look at, on page one of that discussion proposal of ordinance changes with section two dash four dash four, five, the village shall keep on file resident applications for boards committees and commissions, which shall collect basic demographic information, getting manager's phone number, et cetera.
But why do we have to have a?
No, it 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 gives the the correct, it's already blocked that.
I understand that, what I'm saying is, why do we have to have that for years? That's what the language says.
Because some are for multiple years, and that's it's a discussion point.
That's all I was asking, I'm saying, why have it on on file for four years and also uh years in the village?
Some committees are are four years.
Years in the village has nothing on this application about how many years in the village. So I think you could take years out of, you know, years in the village out, and I would be okay if you amended it to two years, because most of them are two-year appointments.
So when we work on this.
Right, I have some. That's all, that's all I was asking for is, how do we mesh the language to what we just approved?
One of those, we commissioner, we are waiting till the new hire for public works. Planning commission.
He's on.
He's on, he's on. Do we have a name for him to put him in? Oh, that's right, Mark Moger. Mark Moger is our new weed commissioner. Planning commission, uh Dan Vanas and Jessica Purley could be my appointments, my recommendations. Uh Dan's been sitting on that committee for years and years and years, and Jessica and her family are founding members of Somerset. Very well respected in our community, so Jessica, thank you for being here.
Damn it, I said Jessica Plurg.
Yes.
Are we, we're gonna take these by, by runs or?
Uh let's uh.
When you guys.
Let's go for a vote, Donnie.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the village president's appointment of Dan Vanas and the uh Jessica Plurg um to the planning commission to fill uh. Is there a second?
Second.
But first and a second in front of your discussion.
Discussion, unless uh that would be, the term would expire in uh twenty twenty-six, is that correct?
Staggered three years. It just depends on, we just see.
Well, okay, Dan and 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 Shilah's were up, so it'd be twenty-seven then, right?
Yes.
I did have one comment on that, I would like to see Kathy Ness on that planning commission.
I have a motion, first and a second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, save sign.
Nay.
Oppose.
I, not, yes, I, I, I did say I'm, I'd say yes.
Great. And next, uh, well, for the weed commission, do we wanna try to vote on Mark Moger, or we just put them in there?
Oh, oh, you, oh, you're right. Um you wanna put Mark in there, right? Okay, I move the, oh, your appointment.
Somebody, we gotta make some motion to approve his appointment.
Yeah, Jay, your appointment, I make a motion to uh uh approve his appointment of Mark Moger as weed commissioner.
Second, further discussion, all in favor?
Where are you giving that second to?
Aye.
Chris, second.
Aye.
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 A term on that one?
Uh one-year term, I believe.
Yep. There you go, all right.
The Board of Zoning Appeals. So my recommendation is Sean Weisen, Dan Vanas, Dave Wallner, Lane Belter, and Michelle Bovee to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Can Sean Weisen hold a position, seeing that he was uh found or pleaded no contest to the water stealing accusations?
Like he's not.
I believe that was part of his plea deal.
He was found not guilty.
Well, was this plea deal to not participate or to participate in ongoing village government?
You don't get a not guilty plea and then have to pay, Mike, that's like not a thing.
Yeah, it's either guilty or not guilty, he was found not guilty.
Yeah, and then he paid the money which he owes us, which he still owes us. I think that's a just a bad look, that's a horrible look, he he got kicked out of office. That's the kind of people we want on committees?
Brandon, I think the trustee speaking out like that against somebody when you're having the facts wrong.
What you, that's what? Are you telling me not to talk, Mike? I can say whatever I want in a meeting.
Tell you not to.
That's my comment.
Put slander or libel against the village or its residents, that's all.
Sure, look it up, man, it's on West Gorts, dude. He owes us a settlement, he has to pay us.
Whatever. Please. Sean Weisen, Dan Vanas, Dave Wallner, Lane Belter, and Michelle, Michelle Bovee. And then, so they would be staggered in the three-year terms as. The, yeah, so the only one. So with Sean and Dan and Dave be two-year terms since since they were those positions.
Cause you have, yeah, cause you had an opening, yeah, so what, that's, that was my question, what term you think on these individuals? Cause Ken Lehman's up, right, and he's no no longer, so you're not appointing him anymore?
Yes, switching in Sean for Ken.
So Sean in for Ken?
Yes.
Okay, so then, then that would be a two-year term, or three-year, it would be twenty-five.
But, I guess, interpretation, how I wanna apply the vacant, it, because it's, it was technically vacant for two years. So it's got one year left, you're right. So is that a one-year? A two-year, two-year?
What year?
Where you come in?
Three-year? I'm just, this is where he comes.
At least if you're, you're filling a vacant position when someone left, then that person takes the rest of their term.
That's what I'm saying, Sean Weisen be a one-term, Dan and Dave should be two years. Lane and Michelle would be three years because of the way that they're laid out versus with those people that are replacing's existing terms. And so have been expired for one and two years.
Yep.
And true. The, I mean.
No, I I think you're, I think you're saying right.
The point five.
So is there anything to to what Brandon's uh statements are in regards to Mr. Weisen? Well, if he's not eligible, then it would be up for uh uh, I mean, you would, you would be able to tell us if he's eligible or not, right?
Well, he's not an elected official.
Okay.
So, you know, the rules for elected officials don't apply to board seat, but I thought we had an ordinance on that, didn't we, Brandon?
Don't we all see that? Or.
I don't think we, I think we tried to enact policy, but we didn't. I I remember there was part of his plea deal that he couldn't be, he couldn't serve an elected position, and I thought it was on an on a committee as well, but I don't have the the plea agreement in front of me. Cause he had to leave office.
But 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 if he satisfied the terms of the agreement then there would be no issue outstanding, and you're saying.
No, no, there'd be an issue no matter what, I think what he did was disqualifying, but I think it, I think it's a joke we're even having this conversation, I can't believe it.
I would recommend you check that settlement agreement, to see if there's language in there that you need not to be on a committee. Before you do that appointment, you can.
There's multiple other people that said they'd be on the zone aborting, why, why do you need, why do you want him on there, Mike?
Think he's good for the community.
Does both of, both you guys owe the, both you guys owe us money, is that why?
Sorry, um, what accusation are you making there?
Right.
I'm saying, Mike, Mike as hideaway owes us money, his unpaid tubing fees, and Sean owes us money too.
Thank you, Brandon. Was it, did someone make a motion yet, or I apologize to board's employment?
I would condition it on his ability, that if if he's not able to hold it, but I I don't have any, my understanding was it was two years. And that's been over two years now. Has he paid the fine or the the settlement amount, restitution?
I don't know.
He's made an initial payment, but he has not paid it off.
Can we move forward with all that for now?
Yeah, we can table that.
What do you wanna make a contingent on, or just move forward?
Just move forward with all of it until these questions can be answered.
I think we.
I agree.
I think we should have a update on where things step.
If Brandon, Brandon's bringing forth something, it's worthy of us to to look into to make sure that that if he still owes money, then uh and 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 that was part of this contingent on settlement agreement, then fine, I I, I certainly find it.
Fire rescue commission, myself, Ken Lehman. I'll make a motion to approve Dan Vanas for a two-year term, Dave Wallner for a two-year term, Lane Belter for a three-year term, Michelle Bovee to a three-year term to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the.
Nay.
Yeah, we don't have Sean in there, so it's fake, that's.
There's, there's one opening, so.
Correct.
And then you might wanna also consider the alternates.
Yeah, so they can hold meetings sometimes.
Because those are typically scheduled on short-term notices, so alternates would be helpful in scheduling those meetings when they.
I, that's a good idea.
Happen.
Who, uh, is there anybody that quite interested in got launched that, uh, lease bikes and trails?
Um, well, Brenda Forrest and and expressed interest, and there was another uh lady I.
Abitha.
Yeah.
Is it Quack, Paige W A K? I think it's Michelle Bovee's sister-in-law.
She, your platform is only.
And then she was gonna run for the board too, and then pulled out.
Yeah, she should be appointed, boy, fire rescue committee and board of zoning appeals.
Captain Quack, is that, does anybody know how, is that we're pronouncing right?
I think that's what I said, and then Scott's sister, obviously sister.
So Tabitha Quack is a, for a, the college, if I said that, I really do, um, for the, one of the big, big alternate horny board of zoning appeals positions, and who was the other one? That we're considering? Uh, I've been heard of another one, yeah. Well, Brenda Forrest. Did Brenda put her name in at all?
She did.
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't have her.
She sent an email out right after the last uh meeting.
Brenda, can you unmute Brenda?
She should be able to unmute.
And I think it's worthy of, you know, recognizing that.
Brenda, are you uh, are you interested in being an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals? She's unmuted now. Do you wanna?
There she is. She got a thumb up there.
So, yeah, thumbs up, okay. Brenda Forrest as another alternate for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
We'll go through the ordinance of Brenda Forrest and Tabitha Quack.
And then we need to put the term limits on those. That's always three years.
Three years.
Both of them are three years or when.
Are they staggering?
I don't know, they don't, they, I don't think there's direction on that, no.
I don't think those stagger.
Those three years, they're just alternatives until, they're not.
Yeah.
That was my motion.
First and, is there a second?
Second.
Caleb with the second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay. The Economic Development Committee, mostly picked by Bob Gunther, and then there's two village board members, myself, Chris Dubak, Chris Ferguson, who's the, with the chamber, David Brock. As you all know, Jim Boo, developer, Judge Rick Lindell, uh and Ken Lehman. And then we've had our first meeting so far, was very successful, and Bob's working to call another meeting.
So you're gonna have to designate the terms when you make these motions.
Yes. Thank you.
I think they're already on here.
Man, they're not. So, well, Mike Capper as village president would be a mentor to the president's.
Yeah, yeah, so twenty-five.
Chris Dubak as well?
No, technically, technically. Be the same, yeah, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five, and we have what, three, two or three years? Uh Chris Ferguson to twenty six, well, it started almost a year ago. Oh, however you guys feel it's best to do, we find whatever.
Year for president.
Twenty-six, all right, so David Brock, twenty-six, Jim Boo, twenty-five. Rick Lindell, twenty-five.
You got two at three years, two at two years, and two at one year, you got your two one years, which is you and Chris. You got two at two years, which is Chris Ferguson and Dave Brock. So are you saying uh Boo and Lindell are?
Well, let's do uh, let's do Chris Ferguson at twenty-seven and Dave Brock at twenty-seven. Sure, you have more longevity. Yeah, Boo at twenty-six, Lindell at twenty-six, and then the vacant one, what would the last one be? Two, two at one.
That's weird, cause you got two at one.
So I think because yours, your role, Mike, doesn't, it doesn't apply in those terms of the two at one, two at two, and two at three. Like yours would be outside of that.
Okay, so we have one more.
We move with these committees.
One more at one.
Yeah.
So the vacant will be at twenty-five. Sound good, everyone?
And then which end lines up, where's the vacant one? You point this down, that's what I heard.
Uh, yeah, Ken Lehman. Thank you. And it's plus alternates, or any of these alternates are, none of these, none of these are all.
The ones that are there are current, but the vacant one would have been.
Thank you for, but.
So Ken Lehman is the alternate?
Yes, sir.
And he's for one year.
Right. Is there a motion? Just updating my form.
We need seven people.
You got Ken Lehman.
Okay, yeah, but he's a full-time member, he's not.
So then he's not an alternate.
He'd be seven members in key to the president.
So they're still to be an alternate.
Possibly, that's, that would be alternate.
No, there's, we're seven already.
Two, three, four, five, six, you need to fill vacant. Three, four, five, six, you need to fill vacancies.
But you got two at one year, two at two years, two at three years.
There's seven members and an alternate.
Yeah, just the alternate line is not.
We still have an alternate position, Bill. I uh, I would like to put Jessica Plord on alternate with uh all the development. Possibilities with her and her family. I think she'd be a good addition. She might not give them vote on some things, but she'd be good input. And this is the one of the rare committees where they do not have any bill of presidents. Is everybody okay with Jessica Plord as an alternate?
Jessica isn't.
I just clarified. I know, yeah, you moved in over a month ago.
I was gonna say, I thought we just did somewhere, but.
No, I'm just clarifying, this is one that doesn't require a law.
Oh, I see.
And then for the alternate, is there a year term on the alternate? Until until you're replaced. Until we're replaced. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make motion to recommend. Your appointments of Mike Cappers and Chris Dubak for the village. Um ending with our term limits, Chris Ferguson to end in twenty-seven, Dave Brock in twenty-seven, Jim Boo twenty-six. Rick Lundell twenty-six and uh to fill the vacant position with Ken Lehman. That would end in twenty-five and the alternative Jessica Plord would fill the term of the seat that she would fill.
First, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Uh we gotta straighten our own.
Yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Call old Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, Chris. Caleb. Myself, yes.
Aye.
I'm saying. Police review board.
You have to reinstate the Main Street Loan Committee too.
No, it's just the finance committee, so I think it just reflects. Who the banker is and then who.
It's not an appointment?
No, well, I think our ordinance says our Main Street Loan Committee is the finance committee plus a banker.
Yeah, so it's just gotta be changed to Chris Dubak.
That's what I was getting there, I just.
I think we should reflect their their terms reflect their whenever their elected terms and.
Chris uh Chris is no longer on the finance committee and now Chris Dubak.
So Chris will be twenty-five and then Donnie will be twenty-six. And you're still Joe Green for First National as the banker?
Correct.
And so his would be a year straight today, so twenty-seven. Correct. Two years from today, twenty-seven. I had to go through Somerset math and then.
Blaming on Somerset, huh?
And then the the new math that curriculum that had to go in and then the replaced with the new math to curriculum. Police review board. Police review board, this one was up, Michelle Bovee, and she was hoping to stay on. And did anybody else show interest in the police review board?
Well, you got Sean Weisen and Kathy Ness, but said they'd be willing to sit on uh multiple boards, so.
I was willing.
And Brenda.
And Brenda too.
So and we haven't heard anything from. I don't, I mean, he's a great person to be on this, but I don't know if he's a village resident anymore. We should find that out, but his term isn't up for a couple of years. But if he's not, it would break that seat. I just. But for today, since we don't know, we don't. Correct, I just say we needed to resolve that. Okay. So Michelle Bovee and Brenda. Show interest. And I like, I like both of them, they're very strong in the community. I like that Brenda is pretty much at at every meeting. And I don't know that Michelle is heartbroken if she's no longer on it, so I guess I would make a recommendation to put Brenda Forrest on. In uh that open seat. Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Name? Were you clarified? You were second, wasn't it? So moved.
I moved it. To approve it.
So and that is a five-year term, so it would be twenty-nine, is that the right math secret?
The ultimate is three years, it looks like.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. This one got weird statutory languages. Uh Caleb, who was the second? Housing Program Committee. Right now, Lane Belter, Ken Lehman, Dan Vanos. And we have the vacants. And they're two-year terms. And I don't, I don't know that these guys ever meet. No, it's only when uh we had a specific, like a C D B G grant. Yeah, this about uh. Lane Bouncer, Michelle Bovee, Dan Vanos, since we put her up, the last one. And then we can fill that vacant seat with. Brandon, you know Kathy is gonna was wanting to be on any committee?
That's what it says on your letter. She said on any committee that the that the Board of Trustees deemed appropriate.
That would be so Lane Belter.
Kathy's on here.
Yes.
Yeah, she's on.
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
Yeah. You can ask her.
Lane Belter, Kathy Ness, Dan Vanos and Michelle Bovee. So essentially, these are all fresh two-year terms. Wouldn't we want to stagger them though? Three terms, but we should probably stagger them.
It can, it's not required.
What do you think? I'm just checking what it says.
No, I'm just.
I make a motion to. The appointments with staggered dates, uh staggered uh um term expirations. So that there might not be any conflict with that. The two that are twenty-three's would be two years and twenty-four's would be two years. So when Kathy Ness would be uh uh up in twenty-five, Lane Belter would be up in twenty-five. And Judy Nane would be up at twenty-six and. My apologies. Thank you for the correction. So Michelle Bovee, twenty-six, Dan Vanos, twenty-six, Kathy Ness, twenty-five, Lane Belter, twenty-five, that's my motion.
One second.
Further discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. St. Troy Bike and Pedestrian Trails Coalition.
Brandon's got Rob Steffler, he's got Lisa.
Brandon, how do you say Rob's name?
Simplinsky.
Make a motion to appoint Rob Simplinsky to the St. Troy Bike and Pedestrian Trails Trails Coalition.
Brandon Crone second.
First and a second, further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, nay?
Mike, I think you might have cut over the fire rescue.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and this didn't get updated from from last year, which has been going to the meetings, been myself, Chris uh Dubak. And uh Dave Wallner. And but then looking at it, it says one village board member and two residents. Correct. I'd like to stay on as a board member, like uh we get a lot out of those meetings.
Yeah, I do too.
Perfect. So it says one village board member. Do you have two village board members?
That's what we've been doing for the.
She's a resident.
Whole year.
May I make a. Paul, it's off. Right, or did you drop the police border review?
No, no, no. His residency. So I'd like to switch, to keep it as it's been for the last year and a quarter as myself. Chris Dubak and Dave Wallner. I mean, it's it's vague enough, it says two village board members chosen at large, so that. Could be a good board member, I guess.
Until recently, it's been kind of hard to get. Interaction with the community. Since lately, it seems like a lot more people in the community.
So Mike could be serving as the board member. Chris Dubak could be serving as a resident. Yeah. And then you still, you mean Dave Wallner, correct? That may be the other resident.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, nay?
There's one question. Wasn't there an individual that sent an email to the board uh? Uh after the fact, I want to say. Uh expressing concern as possibly sitting on one of the committee appointments. I don't remember seeing that. That uh that email in here. That's the same thing with Brenda. Brenda's email was in here and I'm wondering if we're if we might have missed one.
It may not have gone to Tasia, it may have gone.
No, it came from Tasia. That's why I was saying. I'm working on it.
Well, it's gonna be hard to go back since.
I know, that's why. Are we at the end of it all?
Well, we already approved votes and we're moving on to the.
Americans with disability that's down in Brussels.
Americans with disabilities, uh we take these out back to the finance committee. Yeah, it does say finance committee.
I think that's the ordinance.
Says it. To left was, it was left vacant for years, so I think we made the order change it about automatically filled with finance. Or so that it's so it was filled. So it's there and existing and we're not not compliance. Discussion possible approval, update of landowner complaints and River Hills development committee meeting. Bob, can you speak to this?
Lori Rodriguez.
This is something I put on the agenda just because I don't want to keep kicking and kicking down the road for the poor folks with the lakes in their backyard and. Sure, wanted to get an update. Uh Rob.
Okay, sorry. So we did meet with the residents two weeks ago, hasn't been, and we presented them a solution. Um somewhat of a remedy. There was not a lot of. Uh support over that, so they asked uh the developers to go back. Draw something else for alternative, um and we're setting up at the time, hopefully this Thursday afternoon. Go back and meet with the residents that are impacted with the village engineer, myself. Go through the layout of uh what's gonna be done and see if that's more valuable for them.
I understand it correctly, they, so the developer came with a plan and then you weren't in favor of it. Chuck, the engineer, wasn't in favor of it. Asia, you as one of the landowners, weren't in favor of it. And it was like swales or something going in your backyard or something, is that accurate?
So in order to achieve that type of grade plan, everything's gotta be perfect. And if it's not, it doesn't work. And it's not. It it it's almost impossible, that's why. I didn't want to move forward with it. Um I was very sure that it was gonna be a problem, so. Less than large, I should have. Really pushed that we did something alternatively. So, yeah, now we have this on our hands. But hopefully uh come this Thursday. We find a resolution.
So the develop, the developers are coming back with another proposal, is that what the next step is or is?
Well, we're kind of forcing the hand of the developers engineer. To make sure this thing keeps moving forward and not relying on the developer to do it, so. Um and that's conditional on the developers' agreement. So we have not gotten into more detail yet for that. Because there's still outside standardization um situations such as the stormwater, which is one of the provisions. Um they argued with me, I just said, look at your developers' agreement. Um you're responsible, you picked the builders that you had come and build in here, but the village didn't. So, you know, parent realized the problem. If it was the same builder, I I I still think we would have the same problem, just. Yeah, I wasn't like that, yeah, you know, here we are.
So if Thursday's proposal from them doesn't work. Then do we have M S A, put something together and charge them for it or how, what's the next steps?
They'd like to stay out of it, just because. It's hard for them, well, it's a little bit funny because like you have an orange and they're reviewing it, they're all work. Which is kind of like grading your own exam. You know, it's gonna be a A, so it's not the best practice, but. They could recommend a different outside engineering company. Um but I wouldn't recommend M S A to do that just because it clogs the orders a little bit.
Who would you recommend?
Well, I I think giving Carlson another opportunity to do it, Carlson McCann, we learn, they're good, I think we do, it's just. The situation we have is. It's really difficult without impacting, they're gonna tear up people's yards, we have fences. Uh we had to dig alongside two properties and bust up the street, bust up the sidewalk. And you know, it's it's a lot of involvement and. You know, they're frustrated, I'm frustrated, and we want to resolve all of this.
But you gotta make it right.
But we don't want to go in there and do something that.
Quick fix.
We know is not gonna work and we're right back to, hey, this was done a bunch of water. So getting to that point. So, as I I hope and Carlson's been. By uh the residents have recommended a few things to pass on to Carlson for consideration. So do they, when, the the biggest thing, the hardest part is, you're looking at an area. And it it's not a conceptual, you can't see, you know, a rendering of. Tasia's, trying to picture in her mind, what's my backyard gonna look like after you're done? And I have a real problem committing to something when I'm, I'm not sure what it's gonna look like. So that's that avenue too. So, and I understand, completely understand, because they are difficult to look at. You know, gradient lines and elevations and really get a good sense of what's going on here. Um, and we don't want to force something at them where now, um, that one's Asia's neighbor is completely unhappy with something, and it's like, well, it's too late. And listen to that.
Essentially, you're saying we need to point another engineering firm to. Do a full bore co-. Recommendation that is, that we know is going to work?
It's an alternative, I just wouldn't put in a say in that position. Just because I, you know.
If this was less controversial, you could point someone that's not on Somerset, but I agree, it needs to be someone else.
Do we have that with old age to be able to pay for that and get that done?
Yeah.
In the life, right?
Yeah.
Well, the life credit.
I thought we were right there with what we had, just not.
The, the work. The work from Albrightson was seventeen thousand dollars, we withheld forty or fifty. You know, so we didn't go down with seventeen, we, we held more. So essentially, it could double in price, we're still fine. And then that also gives the developer the opportunity to pay those invoices and not even touch his line of credit, which he did to, he said, well, I, I would rather you invoice me and allow me the opportunity to pay them, so. I don't want to get too far in the details of that, but.
Hiring, uh, another firm, is that something that we would do, or, or? Another engineering firm is what I'm saying.
It's kind of uncertain territory for me, so, um, I think I would probably. Defer that to Paul, let's see what the rest, of course, if I should, if that was what we needed to do past Thursday.
You know. The village is gonna say no to the plan. If I'm the developer, I say, okay, what do you want? And how does the village base, what does the village base their know on? You know, you should be able to back that up and back that up with an engineer, whether it's MSA or whether it's somebody else.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing you say is that we should probably get something in front of them to be able to give them an option, uh, of what we are expecting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think all the residents are gonna be happy with any plan that comes forth.
Well, there's gonna be some disruption in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely some that are impacted a lot more that are not gonna be pleased.
Is that going to push back any kind of timeframe, your completion by getting another engineering firm involved?
It will, you know, add time for sure. Definitely.
It'll be back in a few months.
And that could be something where we could have the water resource team from MSA to kind of work a little bit more closely with Carlson to come up with a. Joint effort for a plan as well, I know their eyes have been on it. So, essentially, I like, yeah, I just, I'm a little afraid we're gonna blank motion without knowing. The potential scope of costs.
Well, it sounds like there was some input that you gave to Carlson, and they're gonna come back in some revisions, right?
Yeah, the revisions are here, we just gotta find a date where the majority of the property there's are available. And, and coincide with the availability of. How about, uh, MSA's technician to go out there and shoot the grades to show them exactly what, if things are gonna look like, to the best of their ability.
And if they're, and if they, they're not happy with that, or they don't want that, then, then you would, oh, put that as a offer, say, okay, well then we'll reengineer something to. That will, that will work, but at the end of the day, it's, you know. If, if, it's not gonna fall on the, the village dime, it's gonna be a line of credit for the. The reengineering.
Correct.
Yeah, so. Not everybody's gonna be happy, so it's, do you need a motion on that then?
Uh, I don't know if you need a motion, I, I just wanted more of a conversation, but.
I think maybe.
Action to. Maybe a motion for what happens if Thursday doesn't work out with them, and what direction the village should take from there, and what would your recommendation be on that, Bob?
So that's, um, you know, desire to go get a, a third party involved, third party engineer, then I think. Just your understanding that that might happen is maybe clean enough.
Or we can, we can make a motion that you can, that we're.
Yeah, I think just that you know.
Asking you to.
Oh, we're, we were aware that they might bring somebody else in because we had that conversation and.
And then put some kind of a. Chine limits to, so we can get their yards fixed. Sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay. How was, Tony, how do you about the motion like that, it sounds?
So it's, essentially, we're giving authorization to pair up a third party engineering firm. And then. The other part of your suggestion was a timeframe for it to be totally resolved, correct?
Yeah.
At this point.
Yeah, and I don't even know if it totally. Resolve is right in the plans yet, or knowing when that is, but getting to those next phases.
And. I share the same frustrations, not as much as the homeowners, but as soon as this thing can be done.
Better.
Yes.
So maybe it's just a motion that if, uh, if Bob and Chuck and the homeowners aren't okay with Thursday's. Uh, second assessment from their engineer that we give Bob the authority to. Hire a, a outside engineering firm. And ask them, is that a motion? That's, so moved. First and second, further discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I know this is the name, but they, we'll stick it quite like, yeah, I think we just keep this on future agenda, so we just stay on top of it ourselves.
You know, Tasia, we put the sun.
Yeah.
You wanted to go out, public works, so why don't you guys?
They, yeah, they can do whatever they want.
We're gonna go to public works.
It was in public works, that's why I said.
Well, just to keep updated and. You get a more, you know, more than.
Thank you.
But, yep.
We can work and have products. Yeah.
You want it on both public works and the board?
And the village, yeah. So we go. Hopefully they can kind of work through whatever kind of quick challenges there is before the full board meeting. Close session convened into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified. Public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Like capital investment groups and pursuant to WISSTAT's nineteen point eight five, parent one, fair enough, considering financial, medical, or social, or personal histories or disciplinary data. Of specific persons preliminary consideration of the specific first. Personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph parent B applies, in which. If discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. Or involved in such problems or investigations, village attorney. Make a motion to go into closed session, second. Roll call, well, Chris.
Chris.
Aye.
Caleb Garn, aye.
Chris Duback, aye.
Mike Kappers, aye.
Danny Curran, aye. Ryan, secret.
I do not have, I don't have video capability, so I gotta sign off. You guys have a good night.
Good night.
All right, we are in closed session. And we got a closed session at eight fifty eight PM. There was no action item taken during closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
First and second for the discussion. Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? It looks like it's going more to the.
But they'll trigger any for.
Gentlemen, have a good Fourth of July. Hopefully we'll see you next week.